Institute of Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence for former police commissioner Gene Vecnoa. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Roll.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt. Alderman Massey. President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Approval minutes.
In a motion for August 5th, 2024, please.
Motion by Alderman Jean Francois, second by Alderman Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence.
We have a request for a subdivision approval from Orange Terrace LLC.
Refer to committee. Okay, for the good of the city, I would like the mayor to come up.
Good evening, everyone. You know, with so much happening in the city over the last five to 10 years, with the opening of new businesses, and almost every week we're doing ribbon cuttings, and almost every rental property downtown that is available for commercial rent is either leased and occupied or being withheld off the market by the owner, not for the lack of interest, we sometimes forget the people who helped bring us here. Over the past couple of years, we started recognizing some of the businesses, like Tony Baffa's, when they went out of business, they retired, we recognized their accomplishments and contributions to the city. Maria's Beauty Fashion, like 40 years or 50 years in business here, and we also had Armando the Taylor on the corner of King and North Street, but that was all after the fact. So working with Maria and the Economic Development Office, we felt that we would put together a program on a monthly basis to recognize some of the current businesses that are still operating in the city. And so we decided for our first one in this round of recognitions to acknowledge the work at Fusion Barber Shop. They were established in 2004 by Raul Steele and Idris Daniels. The current owner is Raymond Marquez, who started working at Fusion in 2013. In 2017, Raul and Idris wanted to retire, offered the establishment to Raymond for a fee. In 2018, Raymond and Nicole purchased Fusion Barber Shop. In 2019, they renovated right here in downtown, made an additional commitment to being in our inner city, in the downtown area. They added other merchandise-type activities into their business, custom embroidery, merchandise, hosting events, participating in activities such as the backpack programs and things in our local schools, working with our veterans, and they love being part of the community. So I'd like to have Raymond and Nicole come on up, and as a symbol of our appreciation here, and as I said, we're going to be doing this on a monthly basis. He's the lucky one because he's getting the more expensive plaque. In the future, they're going to be getting certificates of recognition. It's always good to be number one, so we want to say thank you.
I'm a little nervous. First and foremost, I want to thank my Lord and Savior. Without Him, I wouldn't be possible. Thank my wife next to me. This is amazing. Words can't explain what I'm feeling right now. But I came a long way, just to tell them.
Love you, man.
That's right. This is an amazing feeling. I just got to say it. I love everybody that's behind me, all my supporters. Without them, there wouldn't be no Fusion. I just really, really want to thank my two brothers in the back, man. Idris and Raul. I love you, brothers. I love you guys, because without you guys, it wouldn't be possible, you know? I just love everything about this shop, everything that it brings, the opportunity that it brings to the kids, from the giving back to the book bags, to going to the high school, cutting for free, everything that we do. It's just amazing. The opportunities that it opened up for other entrepreneurs that who worked at the shop, who got their own shops, like my brother over here, George Vega, you know? He's out at Fort Jervis, you know? We got Sean from Six West, who actually came out of Fusion also, so it just gives so many opportunities for the young youth and those who are there with me right now to open up their own establishment and become entrepreneurs for themselves also. That's what Fusion did for me. Once again, I still want to thank my brother right there, my other brother. He flew all the way from Atlanta for this. It's amazing. I've got my cousin. Love you, cuz. Love you, love you, love you. My other brother, Mr. Williams, Rizzo, everybody who's here, thank you. I love all you guys. Thank you so, so much. After here, we will have an after-party at Sadie's Bookstore. If you want to come by, we got nice, good food. And I love you, love you, my brother. I love you. Keep shining, you hear me? Please, please. And that's about it, I guess, right? Love everyone who came. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless, God bless.
Good night.
How long you gonna be in town?
Got quite the following.
All right, so we're back with the Good in the City. At this time, I would like to call up Dave and Anna from Run for Downtown.
Thank you, Mr. President. And wow. I mean, that was really cool, right? They've been down here for 20 years. We've been down here for 20 years. That was very cool. But how about this past weekend? This past weekend was absolutely phenomenal here. Every single piece of the Run For Downtown, the Marshall and Sterling Insurance Run For Downtown, was a record this year. It was the 18th year. 18th year we've done this. It should have been 19, but we all know what happened in 2020. But participants, be it runner, be it walker, be it Zumba participant, through the roof. Extra people from the community that came downtown, through the roof. Restaurants, through the roof. Sponsors, through the roof. This was an absolutely phenomenal weekend. We can't wait for next year. Next year, it's August 16th, 2025. But let's just try to thank some of the people that were here involved with the Run For Downtown. You got the runners, you have the walkers, you have Zumba participants, spectators out on the course, spectators at the finish line, spectators throughout downtown, volunteers. Groups came out from everywhere, Kiwanis, Lions, you know, just huge groups. Middletown High School volleyball team, Middletown High School National Honor Society, groups of volunteers, sponsors, through the roof. We can't believe the outreach that people, organizations are making toward us to become a part of this event. The restaurants, we had 17 restaurants sampling food for the participants and for all the people that came downtown. City officials, your backing, I mean, the support of this city is phenomenal. Middletown Police, unbelievable. Fire Department, unbelievable. DPW, there's so many pieces to this puzzle, it blows my mind, like, when these pieces all fall in place. Parks and Rec, Middletown High School, The Bid, Paramount Theater, Orange County Tourism, giving us some money for promotional things. And we can't do this without the support of the community, and the community is out there. They're out in front of their houses, they're cheering on the runners, they're cheering on the walkers. They're coming downtown and they're being a part of this amazing, amazing weekend. I thank you all, and I really like, usually I'm burned out by the end of this, but I'm so pumped up, I'm ready to go. My committee's going to kill me, but we're ready to go and start planning for 2025. Thank you all.
Great job. Thank you. All right, moving over to for the Good in the City. Anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. You have three minutes. The clock will start. Please be respectful to everyone.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kelly Uller. I'm a registered nurse. I currently live in Kingston, New York. I just moved there this past August. I drove an hour to be here tonight, and I would like to talk to you about Good Cause Eviction. Kingston has passed it, Beacon has passed it. I'd really like to see Middletown pass it. I have family members that live in Middletown. I lived outside, 15 minutes outside of Middletown from 2001 to 2016, so 15 years of my life. I lived in Ithaca for three years, and I started my career as a registered nurse, working the pandemic in critical care, managing ventilators, and I had an apartment for $1,000 a month. I've stayed in that apartment for three years, consistently paid every single month. At the end of my third year, my landlord approached me and said, "We want to do some work on the kitchen." And I said, "That's fine. I'd love to see a new kitchen. We've been here three years." He said, "Well, unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask you to leave." Another tenant in the building, it was a six-unit building, they also were paying about $1,200 a month. They were also asked to leave in order for him to fix the skylight. Both tenants were very happy to stay there and to pay whatever rent increase it would be, but we were told we would have to leave. Several days later, we saw both our apartments listed on Zillow for 50% more. I consider that to be predatory, and I would like to see people in Middletown have the right to safe housing without the fear of losing their job. I worked in an impoverished community in a severely understaffed ICU, and I had planned to stay there for six months to another year. And when you look around at other housing, they had been in the $1,600, $1,700 range. And my husband is a farmer. He makes minimum wage. You know, as someone with a college education, it's very difficult to afford housing. And when you pay consistently, there should be no reason for someone to leave. So basically, starting as a new arran, to be fully transparent, I was making about $1,500 every two weeks. So my rent would have went from about half of my paycheck to about two-thirds of what I was making. So if we could do something, well, now I live in Kingston, and I feel safe living there, knowing that I can serve my community and not lose my housing at any time if I'm paying consistently. Let's see. I mean, together, we paid him almost $94,000 between both tenants, and to just lose your housing like that, just because he wants to raise it 50%, I just don't think that should be something that's allowed. In college, you learn about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. There's psychological safety, love, esteem, and self-actualization. Unable to go up to be able to have higher self-esteem, feeling loved and belonged, you need to be able to have the first two of those pillars, which is physiological, which would be food, shelter, and then safety. So by me losing my housing, that affected the first pillar, which would be shelter, and then safety needs, which would be employment as well as shelter. So I just would like to really see that pass in Middletown so that my family, who lives in Middletown, could stay safely, save for a house, and be able to have a little extra money on the side to be able to go on vacation. Dental care is very expensive, like, you shouldn't be worried, like, there's two months left in my lease. Am I going to get kicked out for no reason because this guy who owns a building, which I don't, is going to raise it that much? So I just wanted to say, Good Cause Eviction, there are a lot of cities passing it. People deserve to be safe in their homes, to be able to give back to their community. I'd just like to see that pass. With that being said, as an ICU nurse, I cannot overlook what is happening in Gaza right now. I would really like to see a ceasefire passed in this city. As a nurse, I'm seeing people, children specifically, because the Gazan population is 40% children. They are being operated on with no anesthetic, no clean water, and also no safe shelter. A lot of cities are passing this. Be ahead of the times, do the right thing, and try to stop sending money over to arms when over $350,000 the city of Middletown is investing in arming Israel, when we could be investing it back in our own communities. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Anyone else?
All right. Good evening, city of Middletown. My name is Jason Neechman. I live in Middletown's Fourth Ward. And I'm back again to talk about Good Cause briefly. I just want to touch on a few things. First off, I want to say congratulations to the city of Beacon. They actually just passed the strongest version of Good Cause Eviction just last night. So really, really excited about that. And it's thanks to the work of community members who are door-knocking, they're going, speaking to their community members about Good Cause, who are really happy about that sort of grassroots movement. It looks like Newburgh is actually going to be joining them when they vote unanimously to pass it on September 9th. I was just at their common council meeting, because I work in Newburgh as well. I've worked doing social work with the homeless. I've worked at Honors Homeless Shelter. I now work at Access, Supports for Living, so I have a lot of clients in Newburgh and Middletown. So we really want to see Good Cause passed. There's a reason why Kingston, Beacon, Albany, different places are passing this law. And so I invite the council to get in contact with the aldermen of other neighboring communities, because there's no gimmicks, there's no tricks with this law. It simply protects our tenants from unfair evictions and egregious price hikes in their rent, thus preventing gentrification and the loss of our community. So yes, the mayor is right that Good Cause Eviction was sued and struck down, but that was only because there was no state law in place that allowed for Good Cause Eviction to stand. So now that that's in place, you're seeing cities like Kingston, Beacon, a lot of cities are opting in, and we really, really need Middletown to opt in as well, because we're just seeing so many people being evicted left and right. I also just want to touch on, oh, also, the portfolio size that we're asking for is to sponsor one unit so that we can protect as many tenants as possible, so that there's no loopholes for landlords, so that's very important. Also, I just want to mention, for the past 11 weeks, I want to say, like, 11 weeks or so, there's been a lot of community members in Middletown and the Hudson Valley area organizing and mobilizing for Palestinian liberation and the end to the death and destruction that we're seeing in Gaza. So I did drop off the resolutions in everyone's mailbox this morning. So if you haven't had a chance to look that over, please do. But I'm just going to touch on a few points from that resolution. I do have my master's in public health. I care about scientific integrity. I helped draft this resolution with community members. It's very much factual, so I'm just going to go through a few points. So we want the city of Middletown to be united against all forms of violence and recognize that all life is precious. Pretty basic. I mean, there's nothing really, like, up for debate with that. I feel like everyone could agree with that. We also want Middletown to be a safe and welcoming community that actively promotes peace and unity and respect for all residents. We want the Middletown city to condemn all forms of discrimination, not limited to antisemitism, anti-Arab racism, Islamophobia, fascism, anti-black racism, white supremacy, you name it, anti-indigeneity and azimophobia throughout the world. We also express profound sorrow and condemnation for the tragic loss of both Palestinian and Israeli civilians, including children and elderly. We want our city to denounce the indiscriminate retaliation by the State of Israel following October 7th. And while the death toll, the official death toll in Gaza is 40,000 right now, the widely-known prestigious medical journal known as The Lancet estimates that the true number could be as high as 186,000 of more. And like Kelly was saying, this is mostly children that we're talking about here, so.
Your time is up.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Chiplinski, and I'd like to identify myself as, first of all, a proud Jew and a proud Zionist, for which I will absolutely will not renounce. I would like to approach this in a way that we can actually start a dialogue. There is no question that nobody is in favor of killing children. There is no question nobody is in favor of doing war of any kind. But there has to be a context. There has to be some type of intelligence about the history of the situation. First of all, we're talking about ceasefire, and in quotations, genocide. I'm very impressed that we're here the first day that the city of Middletown is going to adopt a foreign policy. It's quite interesting. The problem is that genocide is used here and thrown out, and numbers like 186,000 sound very easy and they come off. But when we look at other types of genocide, we Jews are actually used to ask questions. Why is this night different than any other night? Well, why is this so-called genocide different than anything else? At present, in South Sudan, and these are true factors right now, there is 1 million people being in the, suffering from famine and displacement. So why doesn't that one qualify for that? Well, because it's not politically correct. The killing is being done by Arabs, and the victims are black, so that doesn't count. The great peace-loving Hezbollah, within the past 10 years, actually killed, and this documented internationally, 250,000 Syrians. And this is definitely proven. There are thousands and hundreds of thousands of civilians from this conflict that are living in Turkey, in Jordan. But these are not particularly convenient, because they're Arabs killing Arabs. And obviously, nobody actually cares about that. When I hear things like Free Palestine, Free Palestine from whom? From Hamas? The fact is that when we talk about the, again, this genocide, we have the type of thing going on in which nobody condemns Hamas. Hamas lives in tunnels. The distance of the tunnels is probably close to the whole New York City subway. And they're done, they're done there, while all the civilians are up there, and the fighters come out, and then they just retreat. But this makes them as cowards. As a matter of fact, many, many people, many Jews, and all people goodwill, have been in favor of a Palestinian state. The fact is that a Palestinian state could have been there in 1948, was rejected, and were attacked by five different Arab countries. 1967, after the Six-Day War, there was a pronouncement in cartoons saying, "No peace, no recognition." Then in 2000, thanks to the help from President Clinton, there was a plan that was almost, practically all that they have requested, given, but Arafat did not want it. Why is that a difference? Because the fact is that it did not include the destruction of Israel. And that's what they cannot accept in any way. The fact is, as I like to put it in many, many ways, Palestinians, which are very proud people that deserves a lot better, should have gotten Mandela, and they got Arafat, and that's the curse. As a matter of fact, with goodwill, ceasefires need two, not only. Ceasefires need to have people that have been kidnapped. Children need to be free, not with any conditions. So yes, there's a lot that can be done, but you cannot be one-sided. Study the history. I'll be happy to discuss every single thing, all of which is historically proven, and I think we'll come to a better place, and I thank you.
Okay. Going forward, you'll hear a bell, and please wrap it up after that bell.
Do I get time too, like he got?
Everybody got extra time.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Conway. I am an educator. I am a community activist. I love humanity. I love people. Part of what gets me up in the morning, I love teaching. I love teaching. I get excited. I try to take that energy that I have for the school day outside in the community. And the operative word you'll find in community is unity. As elected officials, you have the power to influence someone's experience and behavior. Policy impacts behavior. No Middletown, no Newburgh, none of these local cities are going to impact, quote-unquote, foreign policy. But what you're going to do is inspire people. You have been elected because someone thought you, or a group of people thought you were, for their interest. And are you interested in community? Nobody supports the death of children, or supports the death of marginalized people. And doing the history lesson, nobody, whether they were Jewish, Arabic, Black, woman, nobody deserves to be marginalized just because your skin color, your gender, your sexual preference. What Middletown and other cities get to do is show their community you matter. Where you come from matters. We are considerate of you. Because the fact is, America has always been great. We don't need to make it great again. It's already great. Part of the reason it's great is because we get to elect our leaders, and we get to elect the people who impact our experiences and regulate behaviors from people who are not considerate of others. So to pass a ceasefire resolution says what? It says that we want peace. You are also, besides impacting people's behavior through policy, you impact people's behavior ceremonially. Being a leader is significant. I am also the president of the Newburgh Highland Force branch of the NAACP. I've learned in my position, I can't just do what I want, right? I have to be appropriate. I'm a father. I'm a teacher. I want to remind you I'm a teacher. I just, I love teaching, yo. I can't do what I want. I am a ceremonial person. More is caught than taught. Have you ever heard that? As a parent, they pick up more what you do than what you say. Your constituents and the people that your policies impact, more is caught than taught. When you pass this, it's concerning. When you pass this, it's conveying, if you're Arabic... Can I get two seconds? If you come from this marginalized place, because the issue is, our country is funding a situation that's hurting people. This is manifest destiny all over again. We want to be apologetic to the Native Americans because of, we wanted to get to the West, I mean, we wanted to get to the Pacific Ocean. We are seeing the same thing in real time right now. This is manifest destiny all over again, that we're going to be apologetic 100 years from now. Passing a resolution says you care about all people. When you're not, you're not discounting any group of people, you're saying you're trying to support a group of people who are getting the force of, of a machine that they really can't fight back. And it was up to us and our privileged position to say, hey, let's work. Let's do something different. Let's be about unity, community. And we can talk about history later. Thank you.
Hi. I'm not going to be that long, I promise. My name is Kate. And this is my daughter Julia. My family and I moved to Middletown almost three years ago. We love living here, and we definitely have that Midy pride. I'm at home full-time with my now-three-and-five-year-old. And last year, my five-year-old was selected from the lottery for a full day of universal pre-K. Being able to send my son to school for a full day was such a relief for me as his primary caregiver. I have no family nearby. And being a single-income household, we do not have any money for any kind of childcare. We don't have any extra money, so hence them being here with me tonight. When I learned that close to $388,000 of Middletown's federal taxpayer money is siphoned off and sent to Israel for weapons and whatnot, I wondered how many additional full-day pre-K spots that money could have funded. The answer is 38. 38 families that could have been unburdened from the cost of childcare. I challenge you to invest in our community by passing a ceasefire resolution that demands our federal officials divest in the genocide that is being carried out by Israel. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Common Council. My name is Kevin Gomez, member of the Middletown community, and like many of my esteemed friends and colleagues here, also a parent and a father. All of us want the best for our children, and a future blessed with peace. But do we want a real peace or a fictitious peace? Do you get peace by surrender or appeasement, or by eliminating the root cause of danger, which October 7th reminded us was terrorism? On October 7th, there was a ceasefire. Israel was not in conflict with its neighbors. In fact, the only country in the Middle East where citizens, residents, could freely gather and debate and discuss and disagree, be they Arab, Hebrew, Israeli, Jewish, or Christian, where they invoke the name of Allah, Hashem, or Yeshua, it's Israel. If we eliminate our most indispensable and trusted ally, who will be America's most trusted partner in world affairs? Would it be right to support a ceasefire that at the end of the day could result in the destruction of a people, of a race, of a country that was born out of the ashes of the Holocaust? Is that what we want to do? I do agree that we should have peace and lasting peace in the Middle East. But again, the United States should not be the country that takes the dagger and strikes in the back of its neighbor or the back of its best friend. We need to stand for what is right, okay? If we want to bring peace to the Middle East, then Israel has to write, a right recognized by its neighbors Egypt and Jordan, to defend itself. And as a country, if we want to see our taxpayer dollars go back to investment in infrastructure and our needs locally, of course, as opposed to addressing foreign wars, let's stand by our ally so that it could defeat terrorism and hopefully bring back the peace and stability that people were enjoying prior to that. Thank you very much, prior to October 7th.
I was afraid to speak at first, but sometimes you got to stand up for what's right. I'm a Dominican-Palestinian-American, and I live here, and all I see in the news is kids dying, innocent kids. I don't, I never knew they were terrorists, you know? Hospitals getting bombed, places with food getting bombed. Where does it, where does it stop? They talk about October 8th, but I've been talking about at least 40-something years that they've been deprived, like, living in a prison. I have family there all the time. People get arrested for no reason there and have days, weeks, months that they haven't seen their poor families, you know? And to hear people talk like kids don't matter is sickening, you know? I don't know how people could look at themselves in the mirrors and see all these kids dying, you know? It makes no sense. Allies to what? You know, it's innocent kids dying. You talk about a country that let you guys come in and live there, you know? And you're talking about stabbing people in the back, I think you guys are, you know, the main people to do it. But besides the point, I think this would be a nice resolution because people, man, these are innocent kids. These are just kids, man. They're innocent, you know? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Hello. How are you today? My name is Kamel Jamal. I'm coming from Beacon, New York, where we just passed a ceasefire resolution. I'm a local businessman in Beacon, and I can't tell you how much support that came out from the community when we were able to pass the ceasefire. The important thing is, is our community. The important thing is the generations they're going to follow. Right now, before you, we have an opportunity for a ceasefire. A ceasefire that's going to stop the killing, that's going to start the process for peace, regardless. And we're talking about 100 years, we're not talking about since October 7th, but that's another story. Right now, you have an opportunity in your hand to talk to your kids that are going to ask you, this is going down in history. This is the worst thing to happen on our watch. We all bear witness, and this will hang on your neck. It hangs on my neck every day. I was born in a refugee camp to parents that were 1948 survivors. I can't tell you the generational trauma that we deal with every day, that I tried to take away from my kids, as I raised them here in America, for only this to happen, and now their drama is going to be even worse. This is an opportunity for humanity to rise. This is an opportunity to dig down deep inside and feel your compassion and put an end to this. The higher governments are talking about ceasefire. Our presidential candidates are talking about a ceasefire. It has to start at a local level. And talking about our tax dollars, our tax dollars in every one of these cities, if you do the numbers, see how much is going to Israel. See how much is going to Israel. I'm not going to talk about divesting or moving that. We want a ceasefire resolution to protect our community. It has worked for us in Beacon. It has worked for us in Newburgh. It will work here in Middletown. The community will bind together and work together. I work with the Hebrew Alliance in Beacon. We spoke after the resolution was passed. We hated each other for that moment, but peace prevails, and it starts at a local level. I encourage you all to dig down deep inside and know where I'm coming from. This is not a political movement for me right now. This is about humanity, and we are all humans. We all have kids. If you don't have kids, we all have loved ones, and it's important to keep that in mind. And I thank you for your time, and I look forward to celebrating a ceasefire resolution with you.
Thanks to everyone for giving me the platform to share a little bit about my experience and why the ceasefire resolution is so important to me. My name is Mike Garda. I have been a resident of Orange County for over four years now. I'm a licensed mental health counselor, and I work extensively with clients in Middletown and in Orange County. My partner is a teacher at Middletown High School and is deeply connected to the community and the city. In my career, I have not seen anything that has struck my clients with such a sense of despair, hopelessness, apathy, and dread as much as the atrocities in Palestine. I have had my clients tell me that they no longer to, no longer wish to live on a planet where they have to bear witness to the deaths of hundreds of thousands of vulnerable people. Clients have expressed that they have a complete distrust in local, state, and national governments as the people in power continue to cooperate in an operation that displaces millions of people. I have had my clients share that if the war in Gaza continues, that they will simply kill themselves because they have no hope for a future that will look like this. I have an ethical, moral, and a personal duty to share that the war in Palestine has exacerbated an already-out-of-control mental health crisis in our community, and continuing to support this war is a local issue as it perpetuates a local mental health crisis, not like anything that I have seen as a counselor. It's known that the city of Middletown taxpayers spend nearly $400,000 each year to fund this war, and this money could be allocated to hire more school psychologists, more social workers to assist youth that are already feeling the weight of the world crashing down on them since the pandemic. This money could go to properly-staffed programs at Crystal Run, at Cornerstone, and at Garnet Hospital, where the most vulnerable folks in our community have been struggling with their mental health. This money could assist with access to childcare, affordable housing, and healthcare services, all of which have an undeniable link to mental health wellness. So I ask the city of Middletown Common Council, join with Newburgh, Beacon, Kingston, and other cities in our state to put pressure on the government to do the right thing by passing the ceasefire resolution. Thanks.
My name is Eric Blimino. I'm, I guess I'm a resident of Middletown, just on the other side, the other zip code. I know this is a very tough topic, but I, we have to step back and look at the picture here. This is not our war. We did not create it. This is a war that's going on over 3,000 miles away, okay? And yes, it hurts to, it hurts to the core for many people, and it brings out the worst in people, or brings out the best in people, and there are people that are in the middle. As I came into this room tonight, I saw the plaque behind you, and it says Incorporated, City of Middletown, 1888. While in 1878, Temple Sinai, its formed version now, came to town. For 136 years, Temple Sinai has been working hand-in-hand or has sat in the city of Middletown. Rabbi Schwab worked tirelessly on what's called the Interfaith Council. And what's the Interfaith Council? It's a group of, it's everybody. It's all, it's all ethnics. It's all religions. And he basically was a pioneer, founder of this organization. There has been a great working community since that time. Fast forward, unfortunately, times have changed, the world has changed, the community has changed. We have, we have been able, we have to do what we have to do to protect our community, to protect our shul. Friday nights, we have a guard, we have a guard on Saturday. That's not living, but that's the new norm now. So we do have a long history. Middletown has been a great home for me, for my children, for my wife, for my friends. Again, the police department makes regular sweeps to our property. We have worked hand-in, hand-in-hand, side-by-side with all members of the community, establishing, again, what's known as the Greater Interfaith Council. We stand in solidarity on, at, I forgot the name, the one for downtown park, Tulay Manor. Everyone is welcome. There's all inclusion. No one is, no one is excluded. Doesn't matter size, shape, color, religious background. Everyone is welcome. It's evolved. We've worked hard to foster this relationship. As the temple, as the president of the temple, which I am unfortunately, or it's a, you know, it's a volunteer job, but I have a fiduciary responsibility to our organization, to be strong, to make sure that we operate and we have open doors for anyone that wants to come there. So we really oppose a resolution that would actually create more division within the community. We've worked too hard to get to where we are today, and I think this would be a step backwards for a city as small as we are to take a position for a war that is not, that we are not involved in. We can't use this as a pawn for any short-sighted political stunt. So think wisely before we vote on this. Thank you.
I hope you all are doing well and that you and your families are in good health. My name is Mia Rosario, and I'm a resident of Chester, New York. I did, once upon a time, live in Middletown during my childhood and spent a lot of my formative years here, and some of my favorite memories are in this town. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the ceasefire resolution. I consider myself a revolutionary, a visionary, and a creative. I feel deeply and fully, and my imagination is vibrant, so I want to paint you a picture based on the footage that I've seen that have come out of Gaza. It is uncomfortable, so please be mindful. Sometimes, I like to close my eyes and put myself in Gaza. I can feel the sand and the rocks beneath my bare feet, and I can feel the sun beating down on my skin. And with my eyes closed, I see. I see the death and the carnage. I walk through these moments, these moments that I've seen before. Her head is under a building as her dead body dangles. He's a toddler grasping for his last breaths from being shot in the neck. She's a precious baby with her head caved in in a way that I can hardly make out the features of her face. He is holding his lifeless father wrapped in white, lying with him and holding him close and so tight as if to avoid their permanent departure, closely listening to the roaring silence coming from his chest. I do this to remind myself of what I'm fighting for, to protect my humanity. This has been everyday life in Gaza for the last 11 months. Imagine that was you, that someone shot your life partner in the face or presented the hollowed-out body of your firstborn child. I've imagined it with my loved ones, my brother, my sister, my mother, my partner. I can't begin to describe to you how it feels simply to imagine that. Now imagine living it. This is someone's reality in Gaza as I speak to you now. Whose peace would you be protecting? A friend holds a friend accountable and tells you when you're doing something wrong, us as the United States towards Israel. I beg you to see the humanity in Palestinians and what they are facing. I beg you to look at Palestinians as if you are looking in a mirror, to see yourself in them. No one on God's green earth deserves to experience such a hell on earth. A ceasefire is needed immediately. We have the power to choose a different path, and that starts with recognizing our responsibility to take accountability and to act. I would also like to read quotes from a book that explicitly discusses liberation psychology. Liberation psychology understands that the health of individuals and the health of communities, the health of those who suffer from oppression and those who inflict it, categorizes which sometimes overlap in our complex world are inextricably intertwined. When we are complicit in the harm of others, whether we are aware of it or not, it undermines our own humanity, our own capacity to be whole. This is because we can't truly be well until everyone else is well. None of us alive today created systems of inequality, but it is up to us to figure out how to change them. Practicing liberation requires us to embody in everything that we do the values we wish to see in the world. This requires us to practice accountability, treat others with dignity, and deal with conflict consciously. Accountability has to do with taking responsibility for our words and actions when we cause harm, taking the steps necessary to repair the relationships involved, and changing our behavior so that we do better going forward. I would also like to read a quote from Tich Nahthan. He was a Buddhist activist who is deeply involved with Martin He was a Buddhist activist who was deeply involved with Martin Luther King and deeply involved in Vietnam during the Vietnam Movement. He was very, very big voice for peace and seeing the humanity in everyone involved. He said, "Sometimes non-action is violence. If you allow others to kill and destroy, although you're not doing anything, you are also implicit in that violence. So violence can be an action or a non-action." And just to end off, I would also like to read off a few quotes from the Bible that I personally love. "Learn to do good, seek justice, correct oppression, bring justice to the fatherless and plead the widow's cause. He who justifies the wicked and he who condemns the righteous are both like an abomination to the Lord. Open your mouth for those who are mute, for the rights of those who are, for the rights of those who are destitute. Open your mouth, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and the needy." I will end this off with, to ask the council members to take a look in the mirror. What kind of person are you really? What are your values worth? Are they things you just say to convince, are they things we just say to convince ourselves that we are good people, or are we actually that person? I know that nobody here could look at what's happening in Gaza and feel pride in that or think that that is okay. It is one thing to say you have certain morals and to really, truly think that you believe in them, and it is one thing to live them consciously. Thank you.
My name is Donald Green. I'm a resident of Middletown. I am in total agreement with a lot of things that I'm hearing from this side of the room. Of course, none of us are in favor of mutilation and killing of children. None of us are in favor of war. None of us want to see this go on any longer than it has to. And certainly, we're all in favor of, in the end, a ceasefire resolution. But just to point out, the State of Israel actually proposed a ceasefire resolution to the Palestinians at least six times, that I'm aware of, since the 1930s. And, not false, you can Google it. And, and even more recently, and even more recently, again, they have been told publicly that the only solution that our enemies are looking for is destruction of the State of Israel. There's none of us who would be in favor of a ceasefire if somebody was breaking into our home with the intent to murder us. That's why this is happening. On October 6th, there was no need for a ceasefire because it wasn't a war.
Pardon my voice, a little sore. The resolution calls for a ceasefire. I'm reading the newspaper and watching the news on TV that Secretary of State Blinken is going to one of the negotiating countries, Doha and Qatar, and I hear that the American position for the ceasefire and the Israeli position are the same. So the reason why there's no ceasefire going on right now is because Hamas hasn't acted in favor of it. I see in the narrative that I read earlier that it was intended to be welcoming and unifying. Well, from my perspective, the resolution doesn't do either. And people, I, I hope some of you from Middletown, I hear people have Middletown connections, but for some others that want to give advice to the city of Middletown, I would have preferred if it was more of our own. The health territory, the health authorities that we talk about, when one speaker mentioned the 40,000 deaths, in the first place, every single death of any innocent civilian, Palestinian, Israeli, anybody, it's a tragedy. But I look at the 40,000 tragedies that are reported, and I see that it's by local health officials. Local health officials means Hamas. There was, there was an election, I think 17 years ago, the one election that happened in Gaza, and they elected Hamas. So it, it's tragic, but that's part of the history of this. There's plenty of mistakes on everybody's side, but also, when Hamas gives out the figures about casualties, they freely admit that they're talking about not just civilians, but combatants as well. And there's literally thousands of combatants. So, so I'm not saying that, that there's insignificant, it's a tragedy, like I said, but it's, who's telling us what information and can we rely on it? I have doubts. All right, another, a kind of a war strategy of Hamas is to embed themselves in civilian centers, hospitals, schools. Recently, it was a different terrorist group, it was a soccer field that was hit, and children get hurt and killed, and, and what happened, but let's look at what happened, I'll speed it up. Let's remember October 7th. I mean, that's what broke the ceasefire and brought this, these people into war. And the hideousness of that attack is like unparalleled. I mean, just massive misery and hate. I wish that, and by the way, who's it perpetrated against? Mostly young adults that went to a peace, a peace concert and kibbutzim, agriculture collectives, for those that don't know what I'm saying. So this, my time is out, but I'd just like to ask a question. It, because I think it depends on, on what you, how you see your role as an alderman. Do you see as a, someone that safeguards the safety of our, of our streets and our water supply? Do we have great recreational opportunities for our residents? In other words, helping your neighbor, is that your prime looking, or, or do you want to have a different zone like this, like this resolution kind of urges? And that is that you become scholars of international law. I think it's kind of obvious that this is not the right jurisdiction of government for this resolution. I think that Congress is, is the more appropriate, and they didn't ask me my opinion as to where else, though I'd be happy to talk to people that would want to. At any rate, thank you for your attention, and I, I pray, I pray, and I hope many of you can join me, that Secretary Blinken gets, gets the desired result of having a ceasefire with hostages being released. People forget about hostages. They intruded on the border, they killed, they killed 1,200 Israelis. I knew, I knew I'd get heckled at least at one point, but God bless America. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Crump and I live in the 4th Ward here in Middletown. I'm here to speak about the ceasefire resolution. First of all, I would like to encourage or invite anyone to come up and say exactly what they think is wrong with the resolution, if they have read it. I think it's, it's pretty neutral, and I think it's just like a really easy ask for a ceasefire and for peace. But anyways, my, my partner Jason and I have been protesting on 211 for 11 weeks now. Since we have been protesting, we have built a community together that I am so proud to be a part of. Two-thirds of US voters across the political spectrum support a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Today, I am asking that you represent your city's demand and pass our ceasefire resolution. We are choosing to target the specific genocide because our tax dollars are funding it. To my knowledge, we are not funding the oppression that is occurring in Sudan. Middletown sends $387,961 a year to funding Israel's weapons. I can name countless things that this money could go towards, but here are just a few examples. This money could pay for 46 households with public housing for a year, 134 children receiving free or low-cost health, healthcare, four elementary school teacher salaries, 1,104 households with solar electricity produced for a year, and 10 students with their loan debt canceled. I work as a domestic violence advocate for Fearless in Newburgh, and I can tell you how desperately our program and other social programs could use that money. The turnover for people in social work is outstanding because the wages are not livable. The general funding as well is very limited, and at times, we struggle to help our clients be financially sustainable, even though the situation they ended up in was because someone took full advantage of them and left them with nothing. I call upon the council to stand up for your community and make our voices be heard. This money should be going back into our community and not funding the countless bombs that have caused mass death and destruction, as well as pollution. Please think of your community. I also would like to address the kind of verbal abuse that we have experienced while protesting. Many people have driven past us and said things like, "Kill them all, kill yourself, F Palestine, shut the F up, I hope you die, go get a job," which always strikes me as strange because we protest on a Sunday and most people work a nine-to-five, regardless. And people have called us slurs and names like, excuse my language, faggots, retards, losers, idiots. These are just a few examples, but the most common is, is just people who drive by and say, "F you." I, as an American Jew, have felt unsafe in my community protesting for Palestine, and so have the rest of my friends and fellow protesters. It is one thing to disagree and have a conversation, but it is another to sabotage and yell obscenities and personally hurt and discourage people who are just exercising their free speech. I am fearful for the people that stand with Israel and the horrendous things that they have done. I am fearful because these same people have revealed their inner thoughts to us and shown that there is deep-seated hate and violence in their hearts. If you disagree with us, then it is either you are in denial and refuse to see the violence and destruction that has been circulating all of our social medias, or you have been lied to that being anti-Zionist and anti-Semitic are the same, which they are not. You may have been fed, you may have been fed misinformation and do not know that the displacement of Palestinians and the killing of Palestinians has been going on since before the 1948 Nakba massacre. There has not been a ceasefire, this has been ongoing. Or you may genuinely be someone who is racist who believes that the 2,000 lives lost by Israelis are more valuable than the 40,000 lives lost by Palestinians and the countless homes, schools, workplaces, and stores that have been destroyed. I also would like to reference the death count published by The Lancet, which includes some of the people that cannot be counted because they are buried beneath the rubble, and that number is 186,000. And this is just to count since October 2023. This is not counting the murders that have been occurring since long before that. I have been told by people that I should just stop, that I cannot make a difference with my voice. I am here today asking that you be on the right side of history. I am asking that you recognize our voices and that you recognize the Palestinian people. People in America are losing hope everywhere. This is the one big thing we can do to make a difference. I ask that you allow us to make a difference. I ask that you prove to us that our voices matter and that the Palestinian lives matter, and that you join us in standing up against injustice. I also would quickly like to address Good Cause eviction by sharing a quick example of what has happened to many. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew Hiller. I live in Rosendale and was not planning to speak here tonight, actually. I do a lot of housing organizing in the Mid Hudson Valley and was here just to support and hold a sign for the Good Cause conversation, but it really just pains me to hear my fellow like Jewish community spreading misinformation about the history of the conflict in Israel-Palestine and really supporting, or at least providing a smokescreen so genocide can, can continue to happen. So first, I'll just say, please do pass Good Cause. There's a really terrible housing crisis, obviously, in this community, I'm sure you're all aware of it. People are suffering from unfair evictions and rent increases, and it's really critical protection to, to keep this community safe for working-class people and keep them in their homes. Regarding Israel-Palestine, I urge you, please, to pass the ceasefire resolution. I'm the Jewish grandson of two Holocaust survivors. My mother was born in Bergen-Belsen as a displaced person, and to hear, you know, my community come up here and equivocate about whether 40,000 people have died or not is really, really upsetting to me. Just for the record, you know, in every conflict up to October 7th, the civilian administration in Gaza has given a death toll. It's been proven to be accurate by the United Nations after the fact many, many times. And if anything, it, the 40,000 is a gross understatement of the actual numbers, as Amanda was saying. Medical Journal recently like did an analysis that shows that people who were killed not through direct causes like bombing, but through starvation or not being able to get medical services, the number is much closer to 186,000. I also have family living in Israel-Palestine, and it was extremely painful to watch the events of October 7th unfold. You know, it's like pretty much impossible to hear details of what happened on that day and not think about my sister and her kids, my nieces and nephews, and all those horrible things happening to them. But Judaism also teaches me that all human lives are precious, and so the violent deaths of tens of thousands of Gazan civilians is no less painful to watch. And it's just really horrifying that our government supports and funds the brutal collective punishment of over 2 million people. We know that millions of Gazans have been cut off from food, water, and electricity. All 2.3 million Gazans are at crisis levels of food insecurity. Half a million are starving. Children who are lucky enough to not be killed by bombs are dying of malnutrition. Every Gazan nearly has been displaced from their home multiple times. Scores of aid workers and journalists have been killed. 1.9 million Gazans have been displaced, and it's impossible to know how many civilians have been killed so far. I'll just, you know, wrap by saying that I know you're hearing from lots of supporters of Israel right now that Israel must be allowed to continue its campaign against Gaza for the safety of all Jews everywhere. The historical oppression of Jews is a tragedy, but it does not justify this atrocity. If anything, it teaches us that this atrocity must be stopped, and the fact that Israel carries it out in the name of Jewish people makes both Israelis and Jews around the world less safe, not more. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joseph William Garrido. I, I'm a lifetime Middletown resident. I was born at Horton Hospital, November 15th, 8:33 AM in the morning. You know, I've been here, I support these people. I support the people of Palestine, I support the safety of, of all Jews everywhere. I believe that this is the right thing to do. I didn't write nothing. The truth is that I've been involved in this cause for years, for a long time, and I know a child, well, he's not a kid anymore, and a lot of his family is dead, and I don't know what to do. Sometimes I feel like I gave him false hope because I met him like 10 years ago. I was at a rally in New York, and I'm, I'm just, I'm crushed, I'm, I'm too ashamed to even message him and see how he's doing. You know, I had a lot of family issues and stuff come up, and I, and I walked away from the cause for a little bit, and it just hurts me to see it all come down to this because I, I told him that things were going to be okay, and we were going to fight for this and make it happen, and he can't even return home. He has family members, you don't even know if they're alive or dead. It's, it's, it's horrible, and I just, I'm sorry. It's just, you, you see- It's just, you see the images, you know the story. You got these people, they're in a city and it's walled in. And what are they going to do? You know, you could say that they elected their government, but say if Russia takes over and drops bombs on America and blames us because we voted for Biden, oh, it's the Americans voted for Biden. It just sounds the silliest thing I've ever heard. It just doesn't make any sense. There's so many innocent people, so many people are just in danger of famine, disease, and the ceasefire. It helps so everything can calm down and they can bring the aid in and help people. You can't say you're wiping out your enemy when you can't even distinguish who they are and you're not even looking. There's so many bombs going off. They just sold eighteen billion dollars' worth of arms to Israel. And where are they dropping them? They can't even really explain it. I just, I can't let this cause go. And I keep seeing this kid's face. And it's just, I don't know. I support everything that they're talking about. I want everyone to be safe. I believe that, you know, I don't know much about the Jewish faith, but Zionism, if you believe that God has given you the land, it should be God. It shouldn't be American bombs. It shouldn't be walls. It shouldn't be cameras. It shouldn't be streets for Jews that Arabs can't walk on. It shouldn't be guns pointed in people's faces. It shouldn't be checkpoints. It shouldn't be people missing in prisons for months. It's just, it's too much. And I got a lot on me, you know, and I'm just letting it out. But I'm just trying to be real. It's too much. It's just, it needs to be passed on a local level so everyone knows. And we need to push it up. All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't really have nothing written down, but I want to say thank you to everybody, okay?
I'm going to stop you right there. You only get to talk to once. You can't go up to the mic again.
Okay.
Okay? Nope. We're up for the next one, and that's it. Public comment. Right, here are none. Mayor?
Well, good evening once again. Just to, Marie, if you could fast forward to the Randy McLean sign slide. You know, this is what America is about, where people can come to the public square. Tonight, it's the common council room and voice their opinions on... Usually, we get local issues. Once in a while, we do have national issues and international issues that come up. And we all have our individual opinions. And it's important that voices be heard tonight on both sides. I believe that there were some contradictions in some of the discussions from this side of the room. One, I heard that we should pass a resolution because everyone supports it in Middletown. Yet, the one young lady was saying about all the harassment that their group is getting when they're picketing on Sundays by numerous cars, the name-calling, and so on. So we have, just in my own little world here in Middletown, in my office, we have many individuals, we have many groups. They've contacted me on this issue over the last several months. It's obviously a very divisive issue. We all have opinions on national issues, international issues. And once in a while, as I said, this council does chime in as a body. It's rare, but it does happen. I believe that it's, we all can agree that we would like to see the hostages freed. We would like to see a ceasefire put in place ASAP. We would also like to see a permanent solution to the crisis in the Middle East. But the comments this evening, or not all, but quite a few of the comments this evening, and the emails, and some of the demands in the resolution. Someone said, "Well, what in the resolution don't you like?" Well, quite a bit of it. You're not talking, you're not asking for a ceasefire. You're asking for more than a ceasefire. And you can read it yourself under "Therefore Be It Resolves." But the bigger question is, is what is our primary responsibility as municipal leaders? Is it to bring people together? Is it to listen to people when their national issues or international issues are going on and give them that platform, give them the town square, give them the opportunity for them to convince their neighbors? It's not up to me, or I don't believe you, to tell somebody how they should think about the Middle East crisis or any international issue. I can voice my opinion individually, and I do. But I don't need someone to come here and tell me that by not doing so, that we're doing something morally incorrect. It's not my responsibility to talk to your kids. It's your responsibility to talk to your kids. That's like saying an athlete is the icon for your kids. And you want your kids to emulate certain athletes, but when their behavior goes wrong, you sort of back off and say, "Hey, you know, it's the parent's responsibility, it's not the athlete's responsibility." Might be a bad analogy, but it's there. But again, what is our responsibility as local elected officials? And I view it as bringing the community together, providing safety and security for our local residents, addressing the day-to-day operations of the city, addressing whether a neighborhood is having speeding problems or their kids can't get into a summer youth program, or providing programs such as that. This past week, this guy on the screen here, Randy McLean, he's a city employee. He's also a volunteer fire chief. And Randy, along with a couple of police officers, saved a woman from a burning home this past week. Five people were injured, one died. When Randy, who lived around the corner, was there within one minute as a volunteer, took the ladder off the truck, knocked down a fence with others, climbed up and rescued this woman from a porch. He didn't know if she was a Jew, a Muslim, black, white at the time. He just knew there was somebody on the roof screaming that they needed to be rescued because of the fire. That is part of our responsibility as local elected officials. I've had meetings with representatives of the Jewish Federation over the last several months concerned about safety issues. I think you heard Mr. Blumenau talk about the conditions at the temple on Fridays and Saturdays, the need to have security. That's real fear. That's fear because we get notices about things that are going on in this country, and especially in cities, in large cities where temples are present, and it raises a security concern for people who are going to temple. So we do listen to them and we do try to address their concerns. But at the same time, last week, I met with a group of Muslim women, a Muslim women's organization, to discuss how we can help them with their mission. They're a new group. They're forming to provide ESL training for the women in their community, to try to arrange meeting space, and other ways that they said to us, or said to me, and Maria, I think, was present with me, that how we as a community can help them accomplish their mission. That is a role that we in local government can play. I didn't say because I don't like what's going on in Gaza, I have a side in Gaza to either one of those two groups, that I don't want to listen to what you have to say or that I'm going to pass a resolution opposing your point of view on something on an international basis. I sat down, I listened, and we're trying to work with both of those groups. Our police department recently has retained Stevenson-Moncharay on a grant through Senator Kufus's office. And his primary role is to coordinate services related to police activity for victims of crime, work with the Fearless Program, I heard the one young lady say that she works for Fearless, for the domestic violence programs through the PD, along with other programs to divert our youth from criminal activity. Those are local activities that we, as a city council, need to address. We also meet with a soccer club, which is mostly an ethnic group, primarily Latin American. And we also met with youth football because they share fields. And over time, we try to get them to work together to coordinate schedules so that both groups can enjoy some of the new physical activity, new plants that we've built, such as Wool Slayer Field, so both groups of people can join them. But we didn't sit down and say, "Hey, most of these kids are not Middletown kids or weren't born here in Middletown, so therefore, we're not going to... we're going to give priority to the football players." I mean, we don't look at things that way. We look at people as people. So those are some of the things that we in city government, especially small city government, do. We're here to listen. We're here to give a forum to express your opinions. And you had plenty of time tonight. The council president was kind enough to go beyond the three minutes for, I think, every one of the speakers. And while some of you may be very knowledgeable about foreign policy, some of us individually have some foreign policy background or follow the CNN, MSNBC, or Fox News, whatever your channel is of choice, and watch it diligently to learn about what's going on in the world. And many cities have passed resolutions that also promote misinformation about what happened on October seventh and since during this war in the Middle East. I'm not here to debate the war in Middletown, New York. I believe we should stick to our mission as a common council, as a city government. We should keep meeting with local groups, and I would be more than happy to listen to what both groups have to say on this issue. Welcome them back to future common council meetings if they so choose because they are not only speaking to us, you're also speaking to kids. You're also speaking to families in the greater Middletown area. And it's your job to sell your position because not everybody, the thirty thousand people in Middletown, don't agree with you. I don't know who they agree with because we don't have any polling data to say that. And it's not even an issue of polling. It's an individual choice of how you come down on this issue. It's not something that we in the city of Middletown can dictate to Washington. So sticking to our mission, bringing the community together, not to promote hate, we do not promote hate. We try to bring people together. We don't support racist conspiracy theories. And our job is to protect our residents. And by doing all of those things, that's exactly what we do. The place for action, based on whatever side of this issue you are on, is Washington, D.C. And you all have the opportunity to voice your opinions on this in November. And just another point of factual clarification, the city of Middletown, and I know you're coming from some analysis of maybe federal budgets that you have done about all the income taxes that are paid by Middletown residents and a portion of it going to Washington. But I want to clarify for those who are watching, the city of Middletown does not send money to Washington, D.C. for the purpose of buying weapons. We all pay individual taxes as property owners, but as employees or workers. And I think they came up with some kind of formula, and it could be accurate, may not be accurate, I don't know. But we don't send money to Washington, D.C. for the purpose of sending arms to Israel. We pay taxes for national defense, for Medicare, Medicaid, all those good things. But so we, as a city, as a community, do not send money to Washington. So talk to your kids. You've talked to us. If you'd like to come back and talk to us again, feel free to do so. There's an interfaith council in the city of Middletown. Feel free to contact them, speak to them also. But I did notice that the majority of people who spoke in support of this resolution are not from Middletown. And I think all of us as individuals have heard from our constituents, if we're going to measure whether we're going to put forth a resolution on an issue like this, I think I would need to hear more from the people in the city of Middletown than I would need to hear from someone from Rosendale or Chester or Beacon or any of these other communities. The other thing that was said is that I don't believe that the group that dropped this resolution off has identified who they are because everyone spoke the same tongue, basically. So it's obviously an organized event. And because of the same facts, don't just get out there where everyone did the same calculation. And I know that there are groups out there that are conservative. There's also groups that are very liberal and leftist. Conservative, left, right, whatever you want to call your politics. But I think it's important when you come up to a meeting, a public meeting, that you identify who you are and speak truth. If you're going to want us to give your words any credibility, I think you should have identified yourself as members of the Democratic Socialists of America because that's, some of the previous correspondences have done that. They have identified DSA. Now, I may be wrong. The DSA reference in some of the literature might not be the Democratic Socialists of America. But I think it's important to come up here and say who you are, who you're representing, where your data came from. There's obviously some statistical differences. There are factual differences because we have one hundred and eighty-six thousand dead, and then we have another person in the same group saying forty thousand dead. So I just don't know where the information is coming from. So if it's coming from the DSA and you'd like to send us more information and data on that, I'd be more than welcome to read it and to engage in that on a personal level. But I think it's the wrong thing to do on a city level. So that's my thoughts on that issue. I thought it was important for me to chime in since we had well over probably an hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes of, or hour and a half of conversation from the public. And I really do appreciate everyone coming tonight and voicing their opinions. So let's go back to the beginning here, Maria. And just to touch the Run for Downtown. You know, Randy and Dave and Anna Madden really have done such an outstanding job with this race, eighteen years. And Dave doesn't pat himself on the back enough. But we really appreciate the efforts that were put in this year. We had approximately eight hundred runners, as he said, the sponsors, and these are the main sponsors of the event. And this is all through the private donations to the Run for Downtown Committee. The Run for Downtown Committee takes this money that they make, and then they put it into projects in downtown. They have done the clock at Run for Downtown Park. They've contributed money to the pavilion, sixty thousand dollars, I believe, or sixty-five thousand, to the pavilion at Erie Way. This year, they've given money for the fireman statue, Fireman Joe, that will be going back up hopefully soon. And I think this year's project is some improvements in Thrall Park, in the Thrall Park area. So we need to thank them. We need to thank these businesses that are on the screen here. Those are the large sponsors. These are also businesses that participated. And thank all of the people who came and participated, not only in the race, but in the post-race activities. So thank you so much. This is the committee, Dave and Anna in the middle. And they do put a lot of time in, a lot of effort, and they don't get patted on the back enough, but they do it year-round. Dave said they're going to start soon. And they do a great job for our community and a lot of awareness that comes in. A lot of people that came in saw the activities going on in the city, some new businesses. One that I know specifically was considering coming into Middletown, into the downtown area. And it looks like after the Run for Downtown that they've made their decision that they will be coming in to downtown. So we're just waiting on some paperwork to go through on that. So it has a positive effect all over the place for us in the city. So thank you, Dave, Anna, and the committee, and all the sponsors and volunteers. I did talk about Randy a bit, and just let me tell you what he did. The call came in at five-twenty-three AM, and Randy was the, or is the, first assistant chief. Randy lives on Lake Avenue. The fire was on Knapp Avenue, which is a block away. He arrived on the scene within a minute. And Chief McLean radioed in that there was a working fire, and he transmitted for a second alarm to come for additional help. Immediately after the radio transmission, Chief McLean again radioed in notifying first responders that there was a report of an entrapment on the second floor. Chief McLean then ran back to the back of the house where he saw the trapped female on the second-floor roof and confirmed the entrapment. With the assistance of Middletown Police Officer Andrew Sceandra, Chief McLean immediately grabbed a ladder off of Engine One. He knocked down, the two of them knocked over a fence. He knocked down, the two of them knocked over a fence, placed the ladder, and Chief McLean then ascended to, on the ladder and rescued the lady on the roof. He was able to escort the female down the stairs, or down the ladder, to safety, and moments before the area was occupied, that was occupied, she occupied, became engulfed in flames. Lieutenant Hargit from the Middletown Police Department has confirmed the role of these officers, of Officer Skiantra, along with Officer Reyes and Officer Hurley. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge them and ask that the common council invite them to a future meeting with some kind of, and we can give them some kind of accommodation for their heroic actions. So that would be at a future meeting for the council president to set. ONW, I know Jerry's going to ask about it, so I'm going to give it to you. You've seen the work that's been going on, ONW. This is all part of the Phase 1 project. As you know, we were confident that we hired a company CNS engineers out of Syracuse who are experts in this restoration of these buildings, working with historic tax credits, and all of the different potential funding sources. What, the initially, the building is in such horrible shape. The original analysis was done mostly with drones on the inside to determine the status of the, the condition of the building. We then appropriated, I think this bid was 1.8 million, to do some shoring, restoration, a remediation of asbestos and other potential problems, and clearing away the loose debris. So we're in that process now. At some point in the near future, I think within a couple of weeks, we will then be at a stall time, because then the National Park Service, along with the state historic preservation people, will come in with our engineers, and they will be physically able to go into the building to see what needs to be saved, and what can be saved and what can't be saved, and make determinations on that. The engineers will then come up with cost estimates. And that's when we'll have to make a decision as a community, and as a, as a community, whether we want to continue to invest in this structure, or whether it would have to be torn down. Our hope is that we're going to be able to save this building. At least it looks that way at this point. There are serious problems with it. You don't need to be an engineer to look at it and determine that we don't have serious problems. We do. But we also have serious money coming in from other governmental sources, well over $15 million in state and federal grants. Assemblywoman Gunther was able to secure the largest grant to this point of $4.1 million. And Senator Scufus has chimed in with some buckos, too. We're hoping and confident that the historic tax credits will be applied by the SHPO and the National Park Service for the structure. That brings in additional money to the project. So we're very confident. We have a tenant that will take the entire building at a decent rent. So it's a matter of getting this building fixed, so it's habitable to certain standards, but also, at the same time, restored to its original status, which thus the historic tax credits. Without the restoration of the building to the original structure, the historic tax credits are not available. So, for example, some have questioned the north end of the building where they had the fire, maybe 10, 15 years ago. That is a shell right now, no roof, and is a shell. At this point, the National Park Service has determined that that must be restored. And that adds a significant cost to the restoration of the project. We're hoping, though, that when everything comes together now, when they're able to get into the building, evaluate the, the condition, and to look at the, what would be in the best interest of saving this building, they'll make the right determinations for our city and for the building and for the historical significance of retaining buildings such as this. So we'll know after, I think, within a 75-day process. I think SHPO, which is the state historic preservation, does a, an evaluation, makes recommendations, and that goes on to the National Park Service. And they have 45 days. It might be reversed. It might be Parks first and then SHPO. I'm not sure, but it's a total of 75 days. So before the winter, we'll know what we're doing with this building, where we're going, and hopefully, and I'm still confident, that we will be able to save the building. So that's where we're at with that, Jerry. The Dulcet Town Corridor redevelopment. At our last meeting, we had some residents, a few from Middletown, some from Wayweyanda. We've also had calls from the town of Wayweyanda residents regarding the development along that Route 6 corridor and the Dulcet Town Corridor. The first projects that came up were on Dulcet Town. There was a trash transfer station, along with some warehousing. We did hire a CDM Smith, who is our consultant on it, to review the process. You know, New York State is a home rule state, so we don't have a lot of say in whether a project is a good project for a community or a bad project for a community. Same as Wayweyanda doesn't have a lot of say on what we like to see in our community. But there is a process, it's called SIKR, and we have the opportunity to comment, and we do. So at this point, with the Dulcet Town project, our consultant determined that it was not in the best interest of the city to pursue any action against Wayweyanda, that they were doing things correctly. They might not have agreed with him, but they were doing things correctly. They did their generic environmental impact statement, and they were addressing the traffic and all of the issues that we were raising in our initial responses to them. Apparently now that there's a number of additional warehouses that are being proposed on Route 6, and we're waiting for our consultants to get back to us to see what they would recommend about updating this study now to include the Route 6 corridor. I know, I did forward all of our information to the local advocates that were involved in this project in Wayweyanda. They are organized, and give them access to whatever information that we have, and we'll continue to monitor it. But the advice from CDM Smith was that the city would spend in excess of $250,000 in order to try to fight the Dulcet Town projects, and our results would not be good. So anyone with any common sense would say, we'll have to rely on the Wayweyanda Planning Board and the Wayweyanda Town Board to do the right thing. That's on Dulcet Town. We will look at Route 6 and continue to do so. And what's next? That's it. So any questions?
Paul McLeaner?
Very quickly, any update on the warehouse building of Playtogs?
No, that's a...
Because I get asked that a lot.
Yeah, yeah, they had a tenant. That's why they designed and built it. They, you know, they increased the ceiling height to 35 feet. They went through the zoning board of appeals. They were granted the appeal. I think it's a 16-bay distribution, not necessarily a huge warehouse, like is being proposed, you know, 150 bays. But I guess they lost their tenant. But ironically, it is the same developer who is proposing all of the projects on Dulcet Town and on Route 6, who owns that piece of the Playtogs project. Playtogs, that building itself is zone industrial. And it's zone industrial for a reason, well, because of the railroad track that went behind it, and that there was talk about changing the zoning, but we did not want to add high-density housing on that project. So we decided collectively to leave it as light industrial zoning. So if we do hear any news, we will certainly share it with you. But any user would have to go back to the planning board.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Fourth of the department heads, I'm going to call up the fire chief. I know there's a fire call, so he has to get out of here.
Good evening, Council President and Council. As the mayor said, and I don't want to downplay it at all, speaking with Randy and the officers that day, you know, we went around about our business. After the rescues were made, there was three rescues being commander of that incident. And when you hear positive entrapment of six people living in a house, it's gut-wrenching. On my way there, I think I pulled up about 40 seconds behind Randy, been a volunteer fireman in this city for 34 and a half years. The volume of fire was intense. Just look at the houses next door, both of them sustained damage from the heat. Two officers made a rescue on the side of the house, and then Randy went to the rear. And just so everyone understands, the ground ladder that he used is out of service because the whole top of it was damaged due to the fire. After he made the rescue, it was literally 20 to 30 seconds, and that whole back of that house was fully engulfed. So the decision to jump or the decision, you know, to just sit was seconds. So the officer that attended with Randy, they did a phenomenal job, never, I asked him afterwards, neither of them, you know, wanted to take a break, because then the focus became on the deceased that was inside the building. And, you know, we, we still had hope for the longest time. I mean, I think everyone on the scene knew, you know, what the outcome was going to be, but no one, until we left at 1:30, gave hope, gave up hope. So, but I thank the mayor for, you know, recognizing the efforts that were done. You know, we had a third alarm back in the end of June on Hanford Street. Again, one person was taken to the hospital, the homeowner was taken to the hospital for injuries, non-life-threatening, you know, thank God. We've had very busy months. We're, you know, 115 in July. This month alone, we're on the 20th, and we're at 80 calls already. You know, so, you know, we are, we're, unfortunately, in this business, we're getting busier. And that's something we don't want to see, but that's all I have.
Any question for the fire chief? Paul McLeaner?
Thank you. Has there been any determination of the cause?
No, the fire's still under investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Once I get some kind of determination, I'll definitely share.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I too want to share that this past weekend was epic. It, it started on Thursday night with the We Are the Champions Queen Tribute Concert. This was part of the whole weekend celebration at Run for Downtown. We had about 700 people at that concert. And then Friday night, we had a free outdoor concert as well downtown. And all this led up to the, the race on Saturday. And Dave and Anna are amazing. They started this 18 years ago, and it's just grown, and we're already looking forward to next year. With that said, this weekend, we have a bunch of stuff also coming up. We have Thursday and Friday at John F. Degnan Square Outdoor Summer Concert. We rescheduled one of them for Thursday night from Arena Circa 22, featuring Amy Smith. And then Friday night, the Specs, both at 7 o'clock at Degnan Square, Thursday and Friday. Then Farmer's Market. Farmer's Market has been doing phenomenal as well. It's, it's busy every weekend. Our SNAP and coupon program has been going well. Also, Saturday night, the Parks Department, along with the, the bid is, has an outdoor movie, free outdoor movie showing Disney's Pixar cars. And this movie is sponsored by First Federal Savings Bank, bank right next door. So we thank them as well for their sponsorship and support. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? Paul McLeaner?
We've been listening to It Takes a Village, the get-together, the back-to-school community barbecue. But I haven't seen any place where it says where it is. So you've said it's probably going to be in the back of Davich Park as usual. That's September 7th?
Yeah, the chief could speak to that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Maria. Please, chief.
Just to answer your question, it is going to be September 7th, Saturday, 1 to 9 at the rear of Davich Park. Flyers, I've not gone out to my knowledge yet. We're supposed to have a meeting today to discuss and finalize some of the details, and that had to be postponed due to some scheduling conflicts. But that should be going out soon. It's a collaboration between the city entities, the school district, and some of our private partners throughout the community. I don't have much this evening. However, I do just want to highlight the message that the mayor said and Chief Brady in regards to the fire on Friday. Coming to that scene, it was another great example of the entities of city of Middletown, all the services coming together to work collectively together in unison to provide an amazing service to our community. So outstanding work by all there. Very proud of the men and women of the police department and the fire department. DPW is right there helping out as well, and some other people from the community came out. So outstanding, awful ending, but it was great to see everybody come together to work so hard for, for a common goal. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Questions? Almond John Francois.
Chief, was there any children in the house?
To my knowledge, there's no children, young adults.
Paul McLeaner?
Just wanted to, oh.
Go ahead, Almond Johnson.
I'm Johnson, thanks.
Well, he raises his hand.
I just wanted to clarify, you said 1 to 9 for that event, for the It Takes a Village?
1 to 5. 1 to 5.
That would make more sense.
Yes, 1 to 5, sorry. I said 1 to 9, 1 to 5.
Okay. Go ahead, Almond McLeaner.
All right, I just wanted to ask, there's one resolution about extending the agreement with the Middletown, is it Pistol and Rifle Club or whatever, for the police department. But just so people understand, because the agreement now goes through 2032, and you want to extend it to 2062, and my understanding is that's because of some bank loans and things that they have to have set for that amount of time. Is that correct?
Yes, so that agreement is for the Middletown Keystone Association, which it's a, it's a unique situation that dates way back, way before me. But the building is actually on city property, but the building itself was built by that association under an agreement between the city and the association. I think it dates back into the early 70s. They came to us about a year ago. I sat with the leadership there, with Alex Smith, and discussed the terms and the purpose behind their request. We actually met with their attorney as well. Basically, they're looking to make improvements on the facility, which would require them to take out some type of loan. And the lending institution wasn't willing to give them the amount or the loan terms that they wanted with such a short amount of time left on their lease. That's why they came to us. We went over the, suggested improvements with them. We have no issue with them, and they still are going to have, we will still, as a police department, have the ability to utilize it as we do today.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the city clerk? All right. Petitions and complaints?
We have one petition this evening, as a petition to remove no parking signs on the Boyce Street.
Forward to committee. Okay, Marks of Alderman, Alderman Green.
All right, thank you. Mayor, what you, what you stated regarding the resolution, regarding some of the facts and the misinformation, disinformation spread across, you know, news and things, I, I know my, many of my constituents are actually here this evening, and I don't think any of them voted on me for my foreign policy. I am certainly not in favor of killing children and innocent people across anywhere, whether it be here in Middletown or 5,000, you know, miles away. You know, this, just popping up on my desk this evening, I apparently was dropped off this morning, you know, I, I couldn't, I couldn't in any good faith at all vote on anything like this this evening. So I do know that my, you know, when I went to bed last night, I was really concerned about how I was going to talk to some of my constituents to get them to agree on a sidewalk somewhere. I'm pretty sure that if they went to the United States Congress and tried to bring that in front of them, they would lap them out of the building. There are correct public places and political entities in this country to handle these that are a lot more qualified on foreign policy than I am. So I'll leave it to those much wiser than I am. Other than that, we had a great constituents meeting. We do have one on the second Monday of every month. I look forward to hoping to see everyone here at 7:00 PM then. And just, you know, to speak on Randy and the officers that, you know, it's something that, if you, if you know Randy, he didn't think twice about it. His goal was to save someone's life, to do what he does for the city every day. And I couldn't be more, more proud of him. I couldn't be more, more proud of him and the officers who, you know, don't necessarily have fire training or, or things like that to just uh, not even think about it and go and assist him, um, just well done by everyone, so thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Um, thank you, I also want to thank uh, Randy and the police officers and the fire department and we just, we depend on them so much and they're unbelievable in their response and, and what they're willing to do no matter when it happens and so we really thank them for that, um, and then congratulate the people from the barber shop, uh, I think that's a great idea, recognizing the businesses, um, uh, I don't, haven't given the barber shop any business in about twenty years, but I, I, I do recognize that, that a lot of people do and, and uh, I, I, I think it's, it's great and particularly the, the support they had and the people who were here, so, um, I still get lots of positive comments about the work going on around town, I get a few, you can't get there from here, but everybody understands that it, it will be over, um, and everything is, is really looking good. Uh, I do support good cause eviction and I would like to see us work on having it in committee and really get it tailored to Middletown in terms of what size and how it applies and, and see what uh, we need to do with the state law to opt in, but I, I just certainly think it's a good idea. I just want to mention Nathan Halleck and Louis Wisner and Thomas Collins. Nathan Halleck during the Civil War was a Middletown guy, he rescued uh, an injured comrade and uh, at the risk of his own life, brought him to safety and Louis Wisner, I know got up on a beam and distracted enemy fire to, to r- r- rescue half of his uh, company. Thomas Collins was able to uh, capture a regimental flag from the enemy, uh, that's no small task, they're all Medal of Honor winners and they're all buried in Hillside Cemetery and we, I still thank them for their valor and their self-sacrifice, it's not about people who got shot up so much or got killed and so they're not important, they're very important, thank you.
Alderman Ray.
Uh, good evening, um, I, I have to echo Alderman, I apologize, I'm, I had, I dropped my door at college, I was in South Carolina, I did like a twelve-hour drive yesterday, I'm, I think I'm a little exhausted and dehydrated, but I'm feeling it right now and I think people can see that, but I'm a little bit kind of shocked, but, so I apologize for that. Um, but um, you know, this meeting, our common council meeting is for us to conduct city business, um, and it's, it's, I appreciate everyone's right to speak their feelings on a, on a, a global issue, um, I have my own feelings about it, I, you know, I used to work with a woman who had family who lived out uh, in Gaza and, you know, an Israeli family had a fire and all Palestinian families, so, you know, helped them and gave them furniture and clothes and care and food, this is not an issue for those, the people, this is not about Jews disliking Palestinians, this is about a handful of people uh, in power who, who don't understand what they're doing, um, it is a humanitarian issue, I agree with that, but it is not a City of Middletown business issue. Uh, we have the right as Americans to affect policy, we do that with our vote, with who we vote to be our representatives in the Congress, in the Senate and as our president, but this is not a forum to debate foreign policy, I, you want to come in and speak to me about good cause eviction, I'm all about it, I am a, in full support of that because that is the type of thing that pulls the rug out from under families and puts people in crisis, that is what we are here to talk about, I'm here to talk about the safety of the people who live here in Middletown and what we do in our role with the power to protect them and provide for them, so that's what I want to talk about in a meeting and I apologize and it is, I absolutely, you know, I, I, you know, someone spoke about terrorism and you know what, we as a nation were a victim of terrorism, but we did not blanket destroy another country, another people, a, a, a race as a retaliation for that attack, we did our homework, we did our work and we did it the right way and that is what should be happening, but that's, that's a side issue. Randy uh, McLean for our fire department, a true hero, as are all of our firefighters and I'm really proud of him, I think we should all be really proud of him, um, and uh, that's really all I have to say, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of failing on you this evening, that's all I have.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you, well, with respect to your comments, I, I would tend to agree it's not our venue, um, Netanyahu appears to be held, being held, I won't use the word hostage, but a small group in his cabinet that wanted to go, I don't, I don't know of any, I'm not a foreign policy expert, um, maybe some of you are, I don't know of anybody who loves Netanyahu or loves his policy, both internally or externally. The theory is he wants to keep it going, to stay in power, because if he gets out of power, he'll go to jail, does that sound familiar? No, okay, so um, not something I want to discuss in this context. You know, emergency calls are often evaluated by response time, it can't get better than that, I mean, really, I live here, you live there, I heard the thing, I'm right there, so that's, that's remarkable and kudos to all. Um, with respect to run for downtown, um, I am never available on Saturday mornings from eight to one, which is when this event occurs, but I did go to the Paramount and I know Ms. Bruni has spent, I think, a decade trying to get this theater to be where we want it to be and um, the lighting, the sound, the energy, uh, mayor, if somebody saw the events of Saturday and clinched the deal to move their business here, I think if they were at the Paramount Thursday night, that also would have clinched the deal, so congratulations to all. The Owen W., um, I'm not an architect nor an engineer, I think that's fairly obvious, I did manage to tour that building, I think it was three years ago, I went up to all three floors, some people thought that was a foolish thing to do, it probably was, so I do not see the vision to transform it and it makes me a little nervous when, when the mayor says, you know, we have to make this happen, otherwise we'll lose that particular form of funding, I just want to be clear, mayor, all of the restoration is how the outside of the building looks, right, not the inside. There are things on the inside of the building that must be restored?
You, you mean the historic renovation?
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's both, that's why uh, shipo and uh, and the national parks will be coming down to see what on the interior?
Really?
Needs to be saved too.
Wow.
But it's, the building's in bad shape and you have been, you've been the doom and gloom, there's no question about it, but.
I'm still Johnson, just so you remember.
But, we, um, as was explained at the start of the process, if we have to tear the building down, we're going to be spending millions of dollars, it's not a hundred thou- we, we spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to tear down a house, um, so, uh, it's worth the, the one point eight million or two million that we have into it right now, we'll go toward, if we have to eventually demolish it, it's not entirely money lost because you're doing the remediation, but we're not going to be doom and gloom, we're going to keep moving, we have the possibility of additional state historic funds going into the project, we have the ability, possibility of new market tax credits going into the project, so we're going to put together a financial plan that will hopefully, um, over the period of twenty to thirty years, uh, make sense when you balance out the revenue that's coming in over that period of time and the fact that you're not spending two, three, four million dollars to demolish a building, we demolished one building at the site center four, thirteen, fourteen years ago, it was about a million and a half dollars, the building was already down, it was a fire, fire damage, right, so just bring that number forward, so we, we're, we're doing the right thing at this point, but we can't control the condition of the building at this point and, and then, and also remember, because a lot of people on social media, is that we haven't controlled the building for all those years, most of the years, the building has been privately owned.
Right.
And so, uh, but we, we would like to save it and I think it's an iconic structure here in, in the city, it's symbolic of our, uh, of our city going backwards in the sixties and seventy, late sixties, seventies and early eighties, but it could also be a symbolic of, of what's happening in our downtown and throughout our city of restoration, so we're going to keep the thumbs up and keep it moving.
Uh, thank you, your characterization is uh, close to accurate, I really was not sure that this was a good way to go, um, in the beginning, when it was going to be one to tear it down and seven to fix it, now we're up to twenty-one, but at this point, I think your community is for the most part behind us and I hope the project will prevail. With respect to good cause, um, the next legislative meeting, we will address the parking conversation, that was put off because I need four people, public works, police chief, mayor, attorney, and that should happen, as far as good cause, uh, that is on our legislative committee potential agenda, but we're still waiting for the administration to gather some of their own facts and figures as to alternatives at the state level versus what's being proposed as having been adopted by other cities within our region, so it's not forgotten, it's just is not, um, not ripe on the vine, as they say in the trades, thank you very much.
Alderman John Francois.
Yes, uh, good evening, I have a message for uh, the commissioner of DPW, our reservoir level is at ninety-four percent. We have to thank uh, Mother Nature for all this rain that we've been getting, so we in good hands there, in respect to our, I'd like to thank our community for uh, the support and patient for the annual paving and milling project, that as of Monday, the project is all completed and please do not get that uh, uh, confused with traffic operation project, that's going to be going on for a while, weather permitted, probably another year or so, so separate the two, but as of Monday, the project is all completed, uh, congratulations to uh, Fusion Barber Shop, twenty years, it's been a long time, uh, Alderman Kleiner, I gotta tell you, I wish my hair could grow that long because a haircut is fifty dollars, so, so uh, this is it, uh, yeah, as far as good cause, I'm all for it and I'm looking for us to do something about that, I think it's, it's, it's well overdue and we will, thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of stuff tonight, so uh, as far as good cause, I'm in favor of it, uh, as far as uh, you know, the Gaza, it, the, the people that I've heard from, that are from Middletown don't seem to be in agreement and I hear a lot about, well, other cities like Newburg's doing this, Poughkeepsie's doing this, but we're not those cities, we're Middletown, so we, we do things our way, so uh, I think we gotta do it in the best interest of our, of our community and there doesn't seem to be agreement on this. As far as the uh, run for downtown, I'd like to thank Dave, Anna, Maria, Rick, what excellent job, I was out there passing out water and uh, there's tons of people, I, I, I couldn't imagine how many people signed up, I knew it must have broke last year's records and everybody had a smile on their face, I mean, it was a tough race, we were on the uphill final leg of the race and uh, from, you know, little kids to, to seniors, everybody was out there, uh, you know, doing their best, so it was great to be a part of that and uh, like the, all the positive attention they bring to the city, it's so great. Fusion Barber Shop, twenty years, it's great to recognize their success uh, in staying in the business and choosing to stay in Middletown and, and so, in our downtown uh, area and I'd like to uh, thank Chief McLean and the other officers for their bravery and their, 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 the quick response that saved people's lives, uh, that can't be said enough. And as far as the farmer's market, we're lucky in the City of Middletown to have su- such access to fruits and vegetables, that we're lucky, some areas in the United States, they only have dollar stores where there's no fresh fruits, we have De Tang, Garcia, Market Fresh, all within walking distance of downtown, then we have ShopRite on either side, so we're lucky to have a community where we have access to these fr-, uh, you know, fresh fruits and vegetables, so, um, and we have the Indian Farmer's Market just opened up, so, you know, it's definitely a nice key to have, nice thing to have in the city is that Farmer's Market, thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a brief two-minute break and then we'll come right back. All right, we'll start back again with remarks of Alderman, it's my turn tonight, so, um, I first want to start off by a condolence to the Vigonola family, uh, I served with Gene on the police commission for ten years and he served almost tw- uh, fifteen years, a veteran and a really dedicated person to the City of Middletown. Randy, I called him that night, being a fireman for twenty-four years, I know the feeling, call him, how you doing, after everything, nine o'clock at night, and he said the same thing, he said, you know what was bothering me is I'm throwing a ladder over and it was comical trying to jump over one fence and then the other fence and the power line falls down, the power line falls over the police officers and lands on his gun belt, not thinking, they're just saying, they threw a garbage can to try to put the live line and pushed it away and to get to that person, that's Middletown.
Plastic garbage can.
Plastic garbage can, not a metal one, it's probably ours, the ninety-five gallon ones, so, twenty-one years ago, I s- sat in front of uh, Mr. Berkman's uh, house and he's the reason why I'm here today. He made me run for office, I hate politics, I still hate politics, everybody knows I can't stand Democrats or Republicans, but we're here and why am I here, because of the Middletown, became a Alderman, then the following year, I became finance chair and then I pushed, met with Eric, Eric's the reason why we have these cameras and we have Wi-Fi, we have the cable, cable ca- ca- you know, here, why, because I invite anybody to come here, regardless of what your opinion is, whatever you do, yes, come up here, speak, not a fan of the clock, I'd like to let people talk, but we do try to get home to get to work tomorrow morning and be respectful to each other, um, seeing here and being like, almost like the referee, half the room, half the room, I, we are Middletown, a couple of years ago, uh, the Iraqi war was going on, again, my Democrats and Republicans in Congress passed the Iraqi war, we gotta go invade Iraq because of nine eleven, Mr. Kleiner brought up a thing to impeach George Bush like an idiot, I said, yes, let's do it, to this day, when I knock on doors, I still get people saying, why did you do that, that wasn't about Middletown, that wasn't, and veterans say it all the time, still knock on doors, in March, our petitions are due, we knock on doors, we see people, they still say, Miguel, you know you did a really bad thing in two thousand, whatever, and I said, you know what, we did it, we did it, but I learned my lesson, quality of life, garbage water, sewer, recreation, police, that's what we're here for, that's our job, we are here also to talk to our elected officials in Albany and to talk to our congressman, our senator, and they hear us, we invited, I think Middletown has a great relationship with our congressmen and our elected officials who make the big decisions, so, it's a very, very long, lengthy, I know we can work together, the Interfaith Council, everybody, like to see people work together, not fight and argue and clap and against each other and everything, we, nobody wants to see what's going on, not since October seventh or years before that and years to come, everybody deserves to live, raise their family and do the right thing and have the quality of life, maybe you guys could reach across the aisle, talk to each other after the meeting, introduce yourselves, we're all here, uh, my number's always on the website, available to over thirty thousand people, if you want to have coffee, I'm available, we're listening, but to come here and demand this from the council at the same day that we all got off our work and everything, I know from experience, it doesn't work, it's all about what we are here or the symbols behind us and what we do for Middletown. And now, let's go to new business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing an agreement with Pets Alive for twenty twenty-four.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Harries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, accepting a nine hundred and fifty dollar donation for the summer bookmobile from the large city school district of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Harries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing a transfer of five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars for camp scholarships.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Authorizing a renewal agreement with Permittium.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, authorizing a budget transfer of $10,000 from the fund balance for a speed dampening pilot program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown Pistol and Rifle Association.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing a budget transfer of $43,000 from within the Corporation Council budget for litigation invoices.
Resolution by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.[1673.26]